Welcome, everyone, to the July 18th City Plan and Zoning Commission for the City of Des Moines. I will go over the rules and procedures before we get started. The Plan and Zoning Commission is generally an advisory body to the City Council. The City Council will hold a public hearing and make the final decision on all matters before the commission, other than site plans and subdivision plans, unless denials or conditional approvals thereof are appealed. Please contact the city clerk or Development Services Department staff for details on council hearings. Applicants will be given 10 minutes to present their requests. Proponents and then opponents from the public are allowed to speak in that order, with each speaker allowed a maximum of five minutes. Applicant is then allowed a five-minute rebuttal. The hearing will then be closed, and the commission will discuss and vote on the issue. All comments are to be germane to the item under consideration, and speakers are to maintain a courteous manner. Items listed on the consent portion of the agenda will not be individually discussed and will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation provided by staff, unless an individual present or a member of the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately under the public hearing agenda. We have a few items on the consent agenda and a few items on the public hearing agenda, but before we get started, can I get a motion for the meeting minutes?
I'll move approval.
We have a motion. All those in favor of approving the minutes, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Any abstentions, same sign. Motion passes. We have a couple of items on the consent agenda which I'll go over. Item number one is a request from the City of Des Moines for designation of the Argon Armory Building at 602 Robert D. Ray Drive as a local landmark. Is there anyone in the audience who would like this item removed from the consent agenda? Anyone on the commission? Seeing none, this item will stay on the consent agenda. Item number two, a request from Michael J. Meyer for review and approval of a public hearing site plan for property located at 205 Army Post Road and for a Type II design alternative to allow an overhead garage door on a primary frontage facade where none is permitted per city code. Is there anyone in the audience who would like this item removed from the consent agenda and discussed tonight? Anyone on the commission? Seeing none, this item will remain on the consent agenda. Item number three, a request from Starloft Condos regarding the vacation of 577 square feet of surface right-of-way and 90 square feet of subsurface right-of-way adjoining property at 2701 Ingersoll Avenue. The surface right-of-way vacation would allow additional patio space in front of the building, and the subsurface right-of-way vacation would allow the foundation for a retaining wall. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to pull this item from the consent agenda to be heard in the public hearing tonight? Seeing none, is there anyone on the commission who would like this item pulled from the consent? Seeing none, the item will remain on the consent agenda. Item number four is a request from JSG Properties for the following regarding -- oops, sorry. Those are the items on the consent agenda, but I believe there's an item in the public hearing which may be moved to the consent unless somebody decides to keep it in the public hearing. That item is number six, which is a request from Lilian Richelli for the following regarding two parcels located at 3803 Indianola Avenue and 3805 Indianola Avenue. A, determination as to whether the requested rezoning is in conformance with Plan DSM; B, amend the Plan DSM to revise the future land use classification of the property from low-density residential to neighborhood mixed use; and C, to rezone the property from N3A Neighborhood District to MX1 Mixed-Use District to allow a mixed-use redevelopment of the site. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to keep this item on the public hearing agenda?
I don't know.
We will keep that item on the public hearing agenda. Thank you. With that, we only have items one, two, and three on the consent agenda tonight. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Approved.
Thank you. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion passes. Still have to say though.
Everybody voted for it.
All right.
We're good.
Okay, so our first public hearing item tonight is item number four, which is a request from JSG Properties for the following regarding property located at 3001 McKinley Avenue. A, determination as to whether the requested rezoning is in conformance with the Plan DSM; B, to amend the Plan DSM to revise the future land use classification of the property from business park to industrial; and C, to rezone the property from EX Mixed-Use District to I-1 Industrial District to allow the expansion of an existing industrial and warehousing use. Sriyoshi from staff will be presenting.
Thank you, Chair. Sriyoshi Chakravarti Planning Staff, I will be presenting this item. This is a rezoning request for a property at 3001 McKinley Avenue. The request is to rezone the property from EX Mixed-Use District to I-1 Industrial District. This request has been presented to allow the expansion of an existing business that's on the property. It's a light industrial and warehousing-type business. This is the subject property. As you can see, it's located at the corner of McKinley Avenue and Southwest 31st Street. It's immediately north of the Des Moines International Airport campus. To the north of the subject property, there is low-density residential. Generally, along McKinley Avenue, there is currently light industrial uses as well as vacant land that's reserved due to proximity to the airport property. I have some pictures of the existing business. This is, as I mentioned before, a light industrial warehousing-type business. They manufacture and recycle glass, window glass-type products. They currently have outdoor storage, which is not allowed in the EX District. This is a view of the business from McKinley Avenue, and you can see the existing parking and storage. I have a few other pictures to show that as well. This is just a view of the separation from the business to the residential areas to the north, adjacent to Southwest 31st Street. You can see that there is some green space and trees, but as you go further west, the business extends north and is adjacent to the low-density residences to the north. This is a picture showing the existing parking and outdoor storage that's on the site, and this is a picture of the driveway to the west. This is showing the existing location of the existing trash dumpsters, and as you can see, the business on this side extends further north and is immediately adjacent to the residences to the north of the subject property. This is a conceptual site plan. As you know, we're looking at the rezoning right now, so we're not finalizing any site plan details, but I did want to show you generally what the applicant is proposing. So, the applicant is proposing an expansion of the use, so they're adding a building addition to the north, kind of right here, if you can follow my cursor. They'll also be repaving and redoing the parking lot that's to the east of the building, and they are required to --
West.
Oh, I'm sorry, to the west of the building. Thank you. And additionally, they will be doing other site improvements as required, including landscaping and so on, as they will be required to bring the site to compliance with the rezoning. There are some updates to the design that the applicant has proposed based on some of the concerns that have been brought by the neighbors, and I will get back to that here in a minute after I've gone through the rest of the presentation. So with that, I just wanted to go over staff rationale and what staff is proposing. The business that is on the subject property has been there for over 10 years. This is an existing business. This is an opportunity to bring the site to compliance and meet the city code. Additionally, the uses that are along McKinley Avenue are generally light industrial in nature. They do provide a buffer, if you will, from the more intense airport use to the south. So, given those factors, staff does believe that the rezoning is appropriate and the location of this particular business and the zoning of the property at the site is appropriate, so long as the applicant complies with some of the staff conditions that have been outlined in the staff report. Additionally, due to the proximity of the business to the residences to the north, we know that certain concerns have been brought forward. These were brought forward by the neighbors during the neighborhood meeting. The applicant has shared with staff what those concerns are, and staff has been working with the applicant to address those. So, one of the concerns that -- one of the major concerns that the neighbors have brought forward is the dumping of pieces of glass into the trash dumpsters, and they have historically created a lot of noise. And with this particular expansion, the applicant had initially proposed to move the trash dumpsters further north. And I might just go back to the site plan here so I can explain this a little bit better. In order to accommodate this new building addition and to be able to meet the various setbacks, the applicant had initially proposed moving the dumpsters further north. And if you remember the pictures that I showed you, currently, the dumpsters were further south. So that was a concern that the neighbors did bring up, bringing the dumpsters further north would exacerbate the noise problem. And therefore, staff has been working with the applicant to move the location of the dumpsters further south, as you can see here. And the new building addition wraps around the trash enclosure area, and that in turn provides some additional buffering. Finally, there is also the opportunity to provide additional landscaping and privacy fencing along the northern boundary of the property with additional landscaping and utilizing evergreen trees that would be able to mitigate some of the sound issues and provide that buffer as well. So, staff has been working with the applicant. A lot of these details will be hashed out during the site planning process, but I just wanted to point out that we are working with the applicant to address those concerns. With that, I wanted to move over to the staff recommendation, given the concerns that I outlined and some of the staff rationale. Staff is recommending that the rezoning be approved subject to certain conditions. The first condition is to limit any use permitted in the EX District and a fabrication and production general use with outdoor storage. The reason we have this condition is to restrict more intense uses that are allowed in the I-1 District in the event that this particular business goes away in the future and something more intense wanted to move into the property. So, this allows the existing business to be able to be there and the improvements to occur without the potential possibility of more intense uses coming in in the future. The second condition is that any outdoor storage shall only be accessory to this use and will be placed and screened to the satisfaction of the Planning and Design Administrator. Again, the third condition is similar. It pertains to the outdoor refuse and recycling areas. It will be located in a position and screened to the satisfaction of the Planning and Design Administrator and will be finalized during the site planning process. And any expansion of use shall require that the entire site be brought into conformance with our planning and design ordinance or Chapter 135. So that's the staff recommendation. We received a summary from the applicant regarding the meeting that they conducted. As you can see, there were several neighbors in attendance. There were several items that were discussed, and they are outlined here. Please let me know if you would like me to come back to it later, and I'll be happy to do that. That's the neighborhood summary that was provided. We did receive several comment cards in opposition from the neighbors to the north, This comment card is from the Neighborhood Association, and they are in support of the requested rezoning. This is the consent map, and you can see the opposition cards that we received from the neighbors to the north. I will point out that since within our consent map boundary, there's a significant portion that's within the City of Des Moines and Zone P2. It's over 30%, which means that if the opposition is over 15%, it would require a supermajority vote from the council. Generally, the percentage is 20% opposition. Since it does have a significant portion of public land, that percentage drops down to 15%. So, right now, we are at 12.7% opposition. If it were to go over 15%, that would require a supermajority vote from the council. That's my presentation. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to take them at this time.
Any questions for staff?
Where's the nearest I-1 to this location? Would this be its own island, or where else is the nearest I-1 district relative to this one?
There is no I-1 in close proximity to this particular area. And if this would be rezoned because of the zoning conditions that staff has provided, if it were to be rezoned with those conditions, it would be a limited I-1 district, so it wouldn't be a full I-1 district. It would be limited to the conditions of approval.
To be limited to EX uses plus this specific use, the way the conditions are drafted, to try to accommodate their expansion.
So I'm trying to think of the precedent that's happened before. Seems like these which come through are denied and required to be denied in order to actually go and find alternative use that keeps the zoning the same but now allows the operating business to actually have what they're looking for. Is that what this is being presented for? Is that follow that same strategy that we've followed regularly? Or is there a reason this one is different?
I don't -- I think we use a couple of different strategies. One of them, obviously, have been things where, as staff, we've recommended denial, and in discussion, it's come up that maybe this is better handled, you know, as a use variance, which you can't get a use variance until you've been denied a rezoning. But it is common for us, though, to recommend approval of things with limiting zoning conditions that help mitigate impact. So this, I mean, this wouldn't be the first time we've recommended a use limitations of whatever the existing zoning is to the -- and then the specific proposal. So this is relatively routine.
But for going up to an I like this, I thought we've only really had this happen where we've changed strategy, that twice, which was one was down by Waterworks and one was that one that was going the other direction by Grayslake, on the southeast side of Grayslake, in the last two years. I mean, so it seems, numbers-wise, we've normally denied and want alternative use, haven't we?
My memory on the Grayslake example is a little fuzzier. The Waterworks, was that the lawn care?
So, Ron Bellat, yes.
Lawn business, yeah.
Yeah.
That's correct.
I don't remember. What did -- do you recall, Sriyoshi, what we recommended on that? I don't remember.
It was similar, where we recommended, we limited it to EX uses plus this business.
Yeah. Sometimes, it's also dependent on what's being proposed and whether or not we have concerns on impact. And, you know, the zoning stays with the layout. Like, if you rezone, it stays, and then it can be passed on to a future owner, where, you know, use variance can, does as well, but those can be couched in a way that if there's a -- you know, you can have a little more operational standards and more enforcement tools to them. So there, I mean, it's a little bit, to me, I think the path you take is a little bit dependent on the concerns raised by the business that's proposed. And so, in this case, we felt with these zoning conditions, this was an okay, appropriate spot to do a limited I-1.
Sriyoshi, I know we're not looking at the site plan, but can you pull it up so we can see? And just to reiterate, you did mention that even as part of the recommendation, the site has to be brought up to compliance 100%?
That's correct.
Any other questions for staff? If not, we will have the --
One more, I guess, then. So, I mean, so for this strip along the north, is our future expectation to actually move that to make sure it all remains sort of more industrial in nature? Or what is, I guess, when we're saying we're happy with this one being an I, I'm assuming that means we're intending, because businesses come and go, right? This business may not be here for 50 years. So, I mean, what are we intending that this is along that strip along the north the airport is always going to be, then? Or what do we want it to always be?
Yeah, I mean, I think this is a use that is a borderline use in the sense that it's pretty close to what would be allowed in the EX. It's the outdoor activity, really, is the deal killer. And they're, but they have grandfathering rights. They're already there. They're not proposing more. They're just keeping what they have. We just felt that it made sense here to, because they're so close to being an EX use that it was, we're comfortable with it. You're right, if you, I'm looking at the zoning map, most of the north side of McKinley in this area is zoned EX, which is, you know, more of a business park zoning with less outdoor activities. I think we would just look at stuff case by case. I think this isn't, I don't see us being interested in just blanketly, like, rezoning the whole area to I-1 or I, you know, but I think we're open-minded to applications as they come forward to try to nuance it to find win-wins for everybody.
I did want to point out that this is a light industrial warehousing building, like, used that Jason mentioned more, probably more appropriate in an EX District, but one of the reasons that it triggers the I-1 District is because they do have outdoor storage. So that's one of the reasons why they're needing the rezoning to bring the use to conformance.
Just to be clear, I mean, I think, we can have discussion later. I aggressively support this use. I aggressively support this type of business. I think it's in the right area for it. I guess my question is more of the strategy of the EX and how we deal with things that are slightly off the EX, whether or not the EX is appropriate more than it is this business. Happy this business, love this business, this type of business, what we really truly need, especially in our community. I'm just, my issue is our strategy. We're looking at what was a thought to it, so.
All right. We can invite the applicant to the podium. You have 10 minutes to present. Please state your name and address and sign in afterwards.
My name, excuse me, my name is Nick Whitcup. I'm with Larson Engineering. I'm the civil engineer working on this project. Much of it's already been said. Obviously, one of the major concerns at the neighborhood meeting was the sound generated at the dumpsters and the fact that we don't have the old site plan that we had proposed, but essentially where the edge of the pavement is shown in the northeast corner is where we had shown the dumpster locations at the neighborhood meeting, which the neighbors to the northeast had a concern with because of the existing noise that is generated dumping glass into the dumpsters, which currently are not enclosed at all. They just kind of sit on the east side of the site over there. So, in an effort to address that, we were showing them where we have them now with the hope that the building north of the dumpsters would somewhat shield the noise a little bit. We're not proposing to move them any further north. In fact, they're probably getting moved 20, 30 feet south, as well as the kind of the additional fence screening at the northeast corner and additional landscape screening as well. So, that was the primary concern raised, as well as another one was site lighting or any sort of light spillover over the north property line, which we just explained, the city has requirements on that, downcast lighting, and essentially no spillover over the properties. So I don't think that that is necessarily a major concern or one that needs to be worried about. But the way that the business operates right now, we're proposing a new overhead door at the northeast corner. Am I allowed to grab this? This new overhead door on the east face of the building here, they have smaller dumpsters, I call them dumpsters, smaller dumpsters inside that they load trash up into, and then when full, they would pick them up with a forklift and run them out down here and side dump into these dumpsters, which would be picked up and carried out when full and empty ones brought in. So, we looked at other locations around the site of where we could put these dumpsters, but the east side of the building makes the most sense for the business operations, and we're hopeful that the additional, oh, the -- And we're hopeful that the additional, oh, the new enclosure, as well as kind of the additional screening that we're trying to provide, addresses the resident neighbors' concerns. I don't really have anything else to say.
Any questions for the applicant?
Do you, do you run operational restriction? Do you have time restrictions? Like, do you run a third shift? Like, is this glass issue happening all hours or is only, how do you run?
Right now, there's no, there is no overnight shift. The purpose of the addition is they basically have a need for increased production. They're behind on a lot of orders. They have a lot of orders that they need to get out. As part of this addition, they'd be hiring roughly 20 to 25 additional production staff to help them with this. But their operating hours are generally like 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
If you're saying they're behind, you're saying that right now there's no restriction from running a third shift, number one. And number two, do we know if that the glass dumping violates noise ordinance? Or have we looked at that?
Your first question, I'm not aware of any requirement that prevents them from having a third shift or an overnight shift. We discussed that at the neighborhood meeting. The owner had mentioned that they used to have an overnight shift, which would result in dumping glass sometimes at 1:00, 2:00 in the morning. They no longer do that. They don't have any overnight shifts now. And I guess your second question regards to, does it violate noise ordinance? I'm not aware of any sort of violations, but I guess I don't have the answer to that.
All right. Thank you. Please sign in. Is there any member of the public who supports this project? Can feel free to come up to the podium at this time. Seeing none, is there anyone in opposition to this project who would like to speak tonight? Please come up to the podium, state your name and address. And you have up to five minutes. You can sign in afterwards.
My name's John Breed. I live at 2810 Emma Avenue, one of the properties off to the northeast of the area. Three primary concerns, one is the noise and miscellaneous trash and packing material that floats into those yards. Not uncommon for us to pick up that trash two, three times a week that blows out of the dumpsters. And the noise, in one of the documents, it was described as ambient noise. It's far from ambient noise. I don't know what the decibel level is, but it's very loud and alarming. The second one is that lighting that we assume will be on the south side of the building and to try to ensure there's not a lot of carryover under the back of our houses and our yards. And the third is feeling like whatever the privacy trees are on that north property line of Manco should be mature evergreen-type trees to make a difference. If they are deciduous saplings, it's really not going to make much of a difference. Would much prefer they be mature evergreen trees. And whenever the time is right, if somebody could elaborate on number one, point number one from the staff recommendation. I didn't quite follow that point.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience who would like to speak against this project? Feel free to come up. You have up to five minutes. Please state your name and address and you can sign in afterwards.
Hello. My name's Charles Curvaro and I live at 2818 Emma Avenue. And my property is directly north of the existing dumpsters. And I agree with what Mr. Breed also mentioned as far as the loud noise. And to give you a better understanding, they use a forklift. And most of the time, they don't even lift the forks up off the ground. So they're dragging this forklift and they have this big bucket on the front of it that's full of glass. And they lift this forklift up over this dumpster and just dump this glass. And it, I mean, it rattles. It's very loud and obnoxious. So that's my main concern is the noise from the breaking of the glass and then also the garbage that we continually pick up off our property that blows out of the dumpsters, over our fences, into our yards. Those are my main concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, there's a question for you, sir?
I think I heard that the collection occurs maybe three times a week. Is that, is that correct?
We maintain our yards very well, so-
I'm sorry, I didn't ask the question well, that the dumpsters come three ti, how many times?
Oh, I don't know.
I heard the number three during a week or something like that. Is that correct?
I think John Breed mentioned that we pick up the garbage three or four, two or three times a week as we mow. There's trash. You'll have to ask them how often the dumpsters get dumped, but I'm not sure.
Yeah.
You can ask him in rebuttal.
Oh, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe just to clarify, that dumpsters are roll-off dumpsters, so maybe once a week, those get collected. But periodically throughout the day, glass is dumped loudly into the dumpsters.
Oh, I see. My question was, have you noticed a more-
You'll need to come up to the- If you're going to answer his question, please come to the microphone so I can hear you.
Thank you, Jason.
Yep.
My question is about the frequency of these events. Have you noticed more lately or less more, or is it kind of the same kind of periodic?
I would say it's been pretty consistent. Yeah, I don't think we've noticed a difference between more frequently or less.
Thank you.
But kind of two events, as I was saying. There's the large roll-off dumpsters that get emptied through the trucks, but it's periodically throughout the day, the glass from inside the factory gets dumped into the dumpsters. And one last thing, I would say that the proposed modifications from the engineers are an improvement over the original that we went over in the neighborhood meeting, but I don't really think they mitigate the noise or the trash concerns.
Thank you. Anyone else in opposition to this project? Opposition? You've got up to five minutes. Please state your name and address and don't forget to sign in afterwards.
My name's Dan Baloo and we live right to the very north. We have two and a half acres right to the north of it, so it really directly affects us.
Our property, yeah. So we've got a couple of questions. Ours are a little bit different. What does the zoning change do to the tax valuation of our property? So of residential properties that surround that. So the majority of our property is directly behind the business.
Yeah, we wouldn't anticipate any impact.
Okay. What about, what does it do for future residential development? We do have, we have two and a half acres of land that's right there. Will there be restrictions?
No, I mean, this is, and I'm sorry, we're looking at the map. You own to the north?
We own directly to the north, yes.
To the east? Oh, to the north, okay.
Yeah.
There's no, I mean, your zoning on your land is same just as it is today, so what's allowed there by that today would be allowed there in the future. It's no impact.
Okay. And we also had addressed the water runoff. We do get, when there's big storms, we do have an issue with water. And then our sump pump literally ran for two weeks. So that is, when they're talking about the trees that they're putting on the east side, I see that they're going to put some throughout that whole line, but maybe they could include those all the way along and it would help with the water runoff. And we can vouch also for the trash. We pick up the trash. He picks up the trash on a regular basis, so.
If, assuming the project would move forward during the site plan phase, they would have to demonstrate compliance with stormwater requirements. And then also, too, the landscaping would be a requirement that it's a, we have different thresholds of buffering, you know, buffering requirements. And this, with an industrial to residential, it's what we call a heavy buffer. So the most stringent, I guess, requirements we have as far as like plant material and stuff would apply in this case.
Yeah, we really kind of feel like we are in the country a little bit. We have the vacant field that's next to us. We lived out on a small acreage in Warren County. I grew up in the neighborhood. And so, we really like the feel and the feel of the neighborhood. And it's important that this expansion doesn't change. That's all we can say. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. We have somebody else coming up to the podium? Please state your name and address. You have up to five minutes and sign in afterwards.
Okay. Thank you. Mark Skiglioneau. I live at 2814 Emma. And it's kind of north, right next to Charles and Lori, between John and Sue Breed. Same things that they've had. I mean, trust me, we want to see growth within the Des Moines area. So, agree with Chris, I think you were saying, it's great to have businesses like that. We just want to make sure it's not affecting us the way it has been and gets worse than what it has been. I mean, we'd like for them to prove on where it's been because of all the trash, the noise. It's kind of difficult to, sometimes when you're hearing glass crash or you're picking up bags of trash, because it's just a week and a half ago and me and my son pick up two bags of trash. That's what we see in them moving it a little bit further south is going to help a little bit. And I appreciate you guys looking at it and listening to our concerns, right? But I don't think just moving it 30 feet south is going to stop that trash from blowing all over the place. It needs to be enclosed more than just a five-foot fence around it. That ain't going to stop the trash from blowing out. We all know there's lots of wind around the airport. So, something better with regards to keeping that trash in and the noise down would be very helpful. Increasing the privacy, they've talked about putting in the mature evergreens. Mature evergreens would definitely help. The business, the guys tend to take smoke breaks in that back corner where we're at. So that northeast corner tends to be a smoke break area. And you have people out there and they, we're sitting on the decks and they can see us sitting on the decks. That's kind of a concern from a privacy. So having that buffer, not just some little trees planted that definitely in the winter months when the leaves are gone, there's nothing stopping the view. So some, something to block the view, more mature trees would be definitely helpful for all of us, make us feel more comfortable about it. And you kind of talk about the lights not shining in our backyards all night because that gets, and or shining into our windows, that kind of gets annoying if there was. So those are, those are our main concerns. We appreciate them willing to work with us. Part of it is, we want guarantees that some of this would happen. For me, for me to say, I think this is a good idea, I want some guarantees that these are going to be resolved, not just suggestions, not just, hey, yeah, that's great. We'll think about it. I want to see guarantees and stuff before I'd say, yeah. I mean, you know what, I'm supportive of this type of stuff. So, that's it. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak in opposition to this project? Seeing none, is there anyone neutral? Seeing none, maybe? Yes, you can come up to the podium. You have up to five minutes. Please state your name and address and sign in afterwards.
Sure. I'm Sally Davis and it's, I'm on Southwest Second. I don't live near here, but I live near a building that makes a lot of noise and has a lot of bright lights. And I just want to know, people don't seem to know that there is a noise ordinance in Des Moines. It can't be over 65 decibels or something on the property line. And it's really easy to check, but you kind of have to be the squeaky wheel and keep calling and keep calling. And the city of Des Moines will come out with a decibel meter and they will do something. After, you know, it took about two and a half years for them to do something on our problem, but hopefully it's been resolved. So just don't, there are, whatever, people, there are noise ordinances and they are hard to make them happen, but they will do it if you call the police, non-emergency. So that's what I would do, just, that's all. They'll help. That's all. Oh, and one other thing, the lights, from what I understand, they have to go straight down on a, on a building, too. I don't think they're allowed to go straight out in zones. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else neutral? Seeing none, the applicant is welcome to have five minutes for rebuttal.
Nick Whitcup, Larson Engineering, civil engineer again. To address a few of the concerns, one raised was stormwater runoff and on the property located to the north. As of now, or what I've seen, there is no impervious surfaces that are draining to the north or off-site. So, in my opinion, that is not a contributing factor to the, to the additional standing water that, you know, may have happened a time or two on that northern property. There was a mention by the neighbors of mature evergreen trees. And while we would love to have mature evergreen trees there, you can't just plant mature evergreen trees. So, we would be planting evergreen, evergreen trees there, but, I mean, obviously, they would take a little bit of time to grow. And then, you know, lastly, in relation to the dumpsters, I believe what we're proposing right now, or at least what we're proposing with the future addition, is an improvement on the current existing condition. We're moving the dumpsters south. We're putting a building that is, although it can't block entirely the noise due to setback requirements on the east, it is at least partially blocking it a little bit. There is a new enclosure proposed, an enclosure that would surround, surround the dumpsters to kind of help with the concerns of trash blowing out up to the northeast. So this would all, this would be a, you know, a solid wall, gates. Additionally, I was showing a new privacy fence along here that, you know, if trash is an issue, this could help catch trash as well. So, you know, the intent of this rezoning is more to facilitate the future expansion for the, for the good of the business. And we feel that what we are proposing is at least an improvement on the existing conditions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we have follow-ups?
Sure.
Out of curiosity, so, I mean, it seems, in your design, is a berm along the back side possible? A berm along the property line to actually deal with the heavy barrier as opposed to, what are going to be small evergreens?
A few feet is possible. And, you know, you're not going to get a berm that's six, eight feet tall or anything like that. There's just not enough space on that corner of the site.
And then, obviously, it's not the point tonight because we're not on the plan. But in the plan, I guess, would it be something that's possible to make sure data comes forward with what the actual noise is on the perimeter to identify whether or not it is actually, because it, you're saying, in some cases, you're saying, hey, it's not a big deal, but the neighborhood is saying it is a big deal. It sounds like there is a way to get that data. It costs about 20 bucks from Grainger and you could do it in half an hour, right? So, I mean, seems like that would be good data to have if that is a concern. Is that something-
Is that something that the applicant is supposed to collect that data themselves? Or the city goes and gets that data?
It just seems if it's an argument, you have the ability as the applicant to gather what the data is of your operational noise. It seems like it'd be good to know if you're having an argument over something as a measurable number, to have it would be good. Obviously, not the point of tonight, right?
Sure.
And then the third one, I guess, I wonder with those enclosures, have we looked at by putting the solid wall in the south versus the north? Have we figured out whether or not that design could actually amplify the noise versus reduce it? You have open doors on north, which is where the neighborhoods are, and you have solid walls. It seems like they'd echo forward, but again, we're not in the design tonight. I'm just curious if maybe we may have accidentally created something that makes it worse?
The solid wall enclosures would not, they wouldn't really extend much, much higher than the dumpsters. So I guess I wouldn't anticipate much sound bouncing off of those walls as they're, as they're sideloading into the dumpsters. And I guess in regards to getting some data collection at the northeast, I can, you know, it can be a recommendation. I'm not the owner. It wouldn't be something that I would, you know, facilitate necessarily. But if that's something that would either help alleviate concerns or was a city requirement, then we would adhere to that, yes.
It just seems it would help if part of the argument is, hey, this thing is doing this. We're saying, no, it's not doing this. Knowing what it's doing might be useful.
Well, I was, sorry, I was going to jump in and ask one question. Are these, I noticed in looking at the aerial of the existing dumpsters, it doesn't appear they have lids. I mean, these are pretty good-sized dumpsters. Are they, you know, the, a smaller one, when you think more in a commercial, perhaps multifamily, there typically is like a lid that tries to help with the blowing. Is that, do you know, is that even possible on something of this size, or?
Well, yeah, in a traditional, I believe, commercial- In a traditional, I believe, commercial dumpster, somewhere in the 10 to 12-yard range. These are 40-yard dumpsters. So, and when these dumpsters are picked up, they are very similar to a tow truck, how a tow truck lifts up a dumpster. Otherwise, if you're doing with a traditional, either, you know, a commercial site dumpster, you're talking about, you know, lifting them up and dumping them overhead. And the fact that they're smaller, you're talking about dumping them much more often. So, I don't think that that would be beneficial to the sound, to have smaller dumpsters.
I think operationally, the other point is, you wouldn't put roofs on, you wouldn't put tops on these until you're taking it away, right? You'd cover it when it goes on the truck in some cases, but you're not going to cover it operationally. Open it, dump it, cover it again. Is that your question?
Yeah, I just, I was trying to think through, like, I think the blowing, I mean, you're doing, you're suggesting some things to keep the material on-site, so I think that's fine. I just didn't know, I didn't have a sense of how big these were, whether or not they would have, as possible, have lid. Obviously, what you've described to me, I don't think that seems structurally sound compared to a smaller one, like you said, that you lift and so.
Will?
I have a question about the new landscaping. And if you could go back to the drawing for a minute, please? Yeah, that one. The trees along the north property line are different in terms of the graphics from the trees along the east property line. Is that symbolic of anything or?
Correct. These half-toned trees are existing trees. They're not at full maturity yet. I don't know, we probably don't have any pictures of what those look like, but these are existing trees that were planted, I want to say, a couple of years ago. These over here, these darker toned here are not existing. These would be proposed.
I haven't quite understood, are all these new plantings?
All the ones along the north are existing trees.
And that's what I've heard is the request for the heavy buffer mature, but heavy buffer mature evergreen trees. That was the request that I heard from a member of the audience, correct?
Correct.
And so, my question is, that's fine. We've heard support from that, from many people here. My question is this, is the company willing to maintain this stand of trees? And I asked the question, not that this was going to happen in your property, but I see so many times, I'm sorry to say, that we approve a landscaping plan and then a year later or a two-year later, these trees and the plantings that have been put into place to comply have not been maintained. It's very sad to see that kind of thing. I'm just using you as an excuse to complain generally to the public, because I'm sure your company is willing to maintain the property in the way that's appropriate to the firm.
I'm a representative of the company. I'm a civil engineer, so I can't speak on their maintenance of their facilities. To reiterate, these trees along the north here are existing trees that were planted. I want to say the owner said within two years ago. They're nowhere near mature. They're quite small, actually. But, you know, obviously, the intent is that they grow over time. I didn't see any indication in my site visit that they're not being maintained currently. And obviously, you know, the hope would be that for proposed plantings on the east and northeast here, that they would be maintained as well. I just wanted to point out that there was mention of mature evergreens being installed or planted. And I just wanted to point out that you can't really plant mature trees. They just, they have to grow into maturity.
I understand that. So, the plantings here on the east, those that are proposed?
Correct. Correct, yes. And I am, we have a landscaping engineering consultant that would, that will be preparing the landscaping plan. So, in terms of, you know, specifics, what kind of trees or what we're talking about, I can't really answer that. I will say that, yes, we would propose evergreen trees up in here. I can, you know, speak to the landscape architect to let them know, you know, how much of a concern sound is that we can get, you know, larger canopies or dense trees, you know, whatever mitigates the sound most, I guess.
Yeah, thank you. And then I'd have a question for Jason and the city, please. We've been talking about evergreen trees. Can, and in terms of number three, in terms of the conditions or the recommendations, these plantings are being put into place to the satisfaction of the planning and design administrator. Can you give us an idea if these are going to be evergreen trees as have been requested?
Yeah, I mean, they're required, we have requirements. The point of conditions two and three were really to give us the ability to restrict where outdoor storage and refuse and recycling areas are, because the code in general would allow a lot more flexibility on where they're located. And so, we wanted to make sure that we could say, hey, this is what you showed at the meeting. This is where it needs to be. And so, that's why two and three are in there. And I do want, why we have this slide up, I think a neighbor had asked earlier what the intent of the zoning conditions for number one were. And that's just to limit the uses of the property to the uses that are allowed by the EX district currently, so that's 1A. And then, the business model they have is fabrication and production. That's how we would describe it in our zoning code. So, B is there to allow their business model with the outdoor storage. So, again, conditions one are about restricting, you know, future, you know, like if they sold the property, what could it be used for? It'd have to be a business that is similar to their model or something that would be allowed by the current zoning district.
Thank you, Jason. And so, then we will assume that the planning and design administrator will take into consideration the comments we have heard from the citizens and residents along this line.
Yes, for sure. I mean, I, that's our hope. I mean, as staff, we're trying to find balance and respect the needs of the business, respect the needs of the neighbors. I never guarantee to make everybody 100% happy, but we do our best when we have situations like this and zoning conditions like this to try to hear the input that we've heard, think about the discussion, concerns raised by the commission and also the city council, because this will go onto the council. The commission is merely making a recommendation. And then, work with the applicant to find a nuanced way that works for everybody.
Thanks, Jason. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I will close the public hearing. I would just remind everyone that the drawing that we were looking at is just a preliminary idea of what's going to be done, not necessarily in compliance with all of our requirements yet. But now, it's time for the commission to deliberate.
I sort of have two points on this one, since I think the scope of what we're doing is not the plan, it's not the design, it's really truly the zoning of it. And so, the issue, the zoning, to me, I guess, the first piece would be, I hope, as actually a member of the public identified, we have come up, hopefully, with smart ordinances that have requirements developed in a deliberate, sober manner that we should probably be leaving to enforce and what's enforcement. And if we have noise issues, we should probably make sure that the noise issues are addressed, because there have been years of thought that go into those limits. So, I would hope we, you know, are looking to enforcement issues through enforcement, not just these change of items. Strategically, I think that if we're looking at where we're wanting to go with this, my leaning has always been, you know, this is EX, it's a lot of EXs down this road. It seems like this may be another example where we should be thinking of how do we actually fix EX to give us more I-lightish type things versus saying it's an I with a ton of restrictions on it. In that regard, I would prefer personally us leaning towards this is an EX with an alternative use versus we're going to make it a restricted I, because it seems counter to what I understand us wanting to do here and how we've approached it more often than not, understanding we have had ones have gone this way before. It just seems numerically to be in the minority.
I would move the staff recommendation.
Thanks, Will. We have a motion on the floor unless there is additional discussion. All those in favor of moving staff recommendation, please raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Thank you. Motion passes. That moves us on to item number six, which is a request from Lilian Richelli for the following regarding two parcels located at 3803 Indianola Avenue and 3805 Indianola Avenue. For A, determination as to whether the requested rezoning is in conformance with the Plan DSM. B, to amend the Plan DSM to revise the future land use classification of the property from low-density residential to neighborhood mixed use. And C, to rezone the property from N3A Neighborhood District to MX1 Mixed Use District to allow a mixed-use redevelopment of the site. Surya Shih will be presenting from staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Surya Shih Chakrabarti, planning staff. The request here is for two parcels located at 3803 and 3805 Indianola Avenue. They're currently zoned N3A Residential District. The applicant is proposing to rezone it to MX1 Mixed Use District in order to allow a new mixed-use development on the property. This is the subject site. It's located on Indianola Avenue, just north of East Waterus Avenue. It is fairly close to the southeast 14th Commercial Corridor. However, in the immediate vicinity, there's low-density residential. There's a few other uses just immediately adjacent to the site. There's an elementary school to the south and there is apartment building to the north of the subject site. Currently, the site has an existing vacant building as well as vacant land. And I have some pictures here to show you currently what's going on. This is the existing vacant building. There is open space to the south. Another view looking south. This is the intersection of Indianola Avenue with East Rose Avenue that tees into the road here. And this is the driveway into the subject property. And again, this is looking east from East Rose Avenue into the subject site. So, kind of gives you an idea of what this intersection and the street frontage feels like. This is a rezoning. We're looking at a proposal to rezone it from residential to a mixed-use district in order to allow a mixed-use development. The applicant has provided a conceptual sketch. Again, this is very high-level. The details will be worked out after the rezoning. Right now, what they are proposing in their conceptual plan is a couple different buildings. As you can see here, the existing building is right here, which is expected to be removed. There is a mixed-use building proposed to the north, which will have office and restaurant space on the ground floor and potentially apartments on the second floor. There's also a commercial building proposed to the south. And there is parking proposed behind the buildings. Again, very conceptual and the details are yet to be worked out, but this is kind of what the applicant has been looking at right now. I will move on to staff rationale and staff recommendation. Generally, staff believes that this is an appropriate location for this kind of use. It is on a fairly busy corridor in Indianola Avenue. There are immediately adjacent low-density residential. The intensity of the use that's proposed here is compatible with the surrounding uses. And it does allow for some good reuse of the vacant site and the vacant building. And therefore, also provides the opportunity for some infill housing within the property as well. So, given these particular factors, staff thinks that this is an appropriate location for the proposed use and the recommended zoning district. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of the request to rezone the property from N3A to MX1 Mixed Use District. The applicant conducted a neighborhood meeting as required for the rezoning. They shared the concept that was shared to staff as well. This is a summary that they provided. There were four neighbors in attendance. Some of the issues that were brought forward are identified here. And the applicant can elaborate a little bit more on what the discussion was and what were some of the follow-up ideas that they might have had based on the issues that were brought up by the neighbors. So, with that, we did receive a couple comment cards in opposition and I will go through these one by one. Additionally, I received a letter from one of the neighbors across Indianola. And this elaborates a little bit more on some of the concerns that you already saw identified in the neighborhood meeting. So, I'll just hover here for a second so you can look through it. And finally, this is the consent map and shows the neighbors in opposition to this proposal. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to take them.
Any questions for staff?
I believe it was mentioned in the staff report, I realize this is a rezoning and not a site plan, but it did mention about tree mitigation, that it contains mature trees and scrub trees and it must comply with the tree removal and mitigation ordinance. And just seeing, again, I know it's preliminary site design, but it doesn't feel like there's enough space to really do a tree mitigation from what is, what will potentially be knocked down and what areas left for both stormwater runoff and tree mitigation. Is that a concern at all or how is that? I know it's early, just sort of in general.
I will point out that if you look at this concept sketch, it does look like there is quite a bit of parking and no landscaping or room for trees and that kind of thing. This is showing more than what parking would be required per our standards. And with it being MX1 district, it would be 60% of our minimum parking ratio, so it would be even less. So, right now, the 72 parking spaces is, based on what the uses and the square footage that they've shown us, 72 parking spaces is a lot more than what they are required to provide. So, there would be more space for landscaping. And just right now, from the concept, it looks like there's no room at all, so.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. There's supposed to be a proposal of at maximum 15 units. So, why the, the concept shows 75 parking spaces?
Yeah, the, you're talking about the 72 parking spaces that are shown here on the?
Yes.
Yes, this is, this estimation is not precise. The, based on the land use and the density requirements, the maximum number of dwelling units that can be placed on this site would be 15. That's, and per our standards, we require one off-street parking space per dwelling unit, so that would be 15 parking spaces. There would be parking required for the commercial and office uses, but it's not, the 72 is not, it's way more than what would be required. the 72 is not, it's way more than what would be required.
Any other questions for staff? If not, I will invite the applicant to present. Please come up to the podium. You have up to 10 minutes. Please state your name and address and sign in afterwards.
Hi, my name's Jorge Alupi Barra Gonzalez, AKA Junior. So I live at 2526 East 50th in Des Moines, and I'm one of the partial owners with my business partner here. And yeah, we're proposing this mixed-use commercial with residential. And it's a business model that will bring small businesses, so it's called the Suites, and it'll provide services for a small, commercial space for small business owners such as someone cutting hair, eyebrows, any of those services to be able to get a space there. And so this is very high-level concept, so totally see that there's opportunity to change the parking and, you know, the trees, and so very, very entry-level, so open to collaborating and hearing all those opinions with the city and working alongside them and also the adjacent senior housing facility that's 55-plus, whoops, sorry, that's right next to us, and then the school next door. So currently, it's an abandoned building, and we're hoping to revitalize that area and bring some services that the community members can use. And this is my business partner, Jason, as well.
Thanks, Junior. My name's Jason Kuz, and I travel here today from the Quad Cities. I'm a resident there, and Junior is my local partner for this venture. I founded the Suites, which is a salon Suites business model, about two years ago. We have our first location downtown Davenport right now. We're redeveloping another location in Moline, Illinois, Peoria, Illinois, Milwaukee, and then this will be our fourth location here that we're proposing to build on this site. Very excited about this particular location because there isn't a salon Suites facility within another seven to eight-mile radius. There isn't a facility like that on the south side of Des Moines. And so it's going to give, you know, 25 business owners that are estheticians or cosmetologists a very affordable way that they can rent a space to run and serve their clients. And also, the folks that are around in that community will have another place where they can go and get their hair cut, their nails done, and with the senior living facility right there as well, it's a great opportunity for them to just, you know, walk down the road and have some services done, and maybe even stop for a coffee with our Phase Two Plan, which is the mixed-use building. And so the idea is to break it up into two phases. The salon Suites facility, which would be the property to the southeast, would be Phase One, and then Phase Two would be the mixed-use property, which would be some sort of office retail, and then probably a small coffee shop. And then we'd have two levels of apartments above. Suriyoshi today made us aware that we can only have 15 units there, so my guess is we'll probably have seven on one floor and then seven on the next floor above. Agree with everybody that this is very preliminary. We'll have a civil engineer take a look at this as far as lighting requirements, making sure that there's no light escaping the property, disturbing any residents around us. Green space requirements, of course, will be met as well. There will definitely be adjustments to what you're seeing on the site plan here without a doubt, but just wanted to give you guys a high-level view of what our vision is for the property and what we'd like to bring to the area there.
Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Please sign in. Are there any proponents of the project in the audience? People that are in favor of the project? No? Opponents of the project? You may come up to the podium, state your name and address. You have up to five minutes, and you can sign in afterwards.
Hi, my name is Kimberly Allen. I live at 3800 Indianola Avenue, directly across from 3803 and 3805. I'm a South Sider most of my life, except for my husband relocated me. We currently have lived in that location nine years in August, and just based on the numbers, what they're saying is 72 parking spaces, 12 offices, 13 restaurants, seven apartments, and 25 salons. You're at 57 parking spaces. This doesn't even count the traffic flow. I'm the one who sent the letter. It's included in your packets, and there were three main concerns. Location, development on the crest of the hill from one of the pictures that she showed earlier. When you view coming from the south, from Jackson Elementary, going into Des Moines, you're at the crest of a hill on a curve. You're right next to an elementary school. Rose Avenue eliminates the middle turn lane. So if you're coming from the north, heading towards Carlisle, Ewing Park, there is no center turn lane to access that location. There's nowhere to build it unless you take out houses. So along with the location, you're also next to an elementary school. I'm a retired Des Moines public school teacher. I see kids walk all the time. I went to Jackson Elementary. I went to Weeks, and I'm that old. I went to Tech High School, yes. So I'm concerned about kids walking. The next thing is traffic flow. You've got an apartment complex right next to this, and across from that is a low-income housing small apartment complex. So you've already got a huge influx of traffic trying to access that area with no turn lane to get in, and they're coming directly from private properties right north of the prospective development. So southbound traffic doesn't have a center line. Line of sight is a concern. Indianola Avenue, as you know, I grew up right down my Ewing Park. Indianola Avenue is an artery to Mercy Hospital, to Iowa Lutheran, to all of the hospitals. I'm concerned for emergency vehicles. They go by nonstop because that is such a huge artery. And if you start impacting it with more traffic, when you're talking 72 parking spaces, 25 to 50 potential businesses adding more traffic, and then you're impacting southbound traffic going home, rush hour, now you've tied up a center lane that's blocking traffic and going to impact your flow. The last part is the development itself. I grew up on the south side. We're low-income, middle-class. This is more of a boutique operation. I just don't see it being an appropriate location. When you've got southeast Fourteenth and all these empty developments, you've got all these locations that are available. There's no commercial development between Evergreen Avenue and Army Post. The only two exceptions are the fire station, which utilizes Indianola Avenue nonstop, and the church that I grew up in. Those are the only two commercial developments along that corridor. That's a huge corridor. I want to grow. I just don't think this is the appropriate development, and I'm really concerned about the traffic. I would like to see a traffic study done. I just don't think that's the location. There's no clear line of sight for turning, entering, exiting. People have problems getting out on Rose Avenue now. We're really lucky because we have a turnaround in the back with our garage so we can drive out with traffic flow. Other people can't. The two neighbors next to us can't. My other concerns are tax, resale value on our home. I would be curious what if the emergency services have been contacted. I'd like to see what they have to say about it. They're going to be impacted by this as if this is developed. And I don't know if the DOT would have anything on it since it's not a highway. Those are just some of the concerns that I have. I want it developed. I want it changed. I just don't think that's what we need.
Thank you. Are there anyone else in opposition to this project? You may come up to the podium, state your name and address, and you have up to five minutes.
Yeah, Andy Ogden, 3801 Southeast 15th Street. Have same concern she does, but first of all, I'd like to know at this meeting we had with them on July 2nd at this coffee house there, we had a small turnout. I think it's because some of my neighbors didn't even know about these meetings. I have one neighbor in the back with me today. He lives on southeast Rose. He's like four houses down from Indianola. He never got any notices of any meetings. Our neighbor that lives on the corner of southeast 15th Court in Indianola, he finally called the city because he never got any of these letters. So at the meeting at the coffee shop that day, I asked him how many letters were sent out because I couldn't believe we had a small turnout. And they said, well, they'd sent letters to this list that the city gave them, but they couldn't tell me how many letters they sent out. Like Kim says, there's no turn lane if you're going southbound on Indianola Road. There's no turn lane to go into that business. I'm just figuring there's a lot of traffic. I'm worried about the traffic flow because it's right next to the school when school's getting out. A lot of times, the parents and teachers from Jackson park in that lot because it's so busy. I just don't think that there's enough, I don't think the community will really support a business like this. I think we'll end up with a lot of empty buildings. So that's just what I have to say. I just think there's too much traffic and not a good enough way for people to get in and out of that type of business. Plus, I don't really want any more apartment buildings in a residential area. We already have the one apartment building on the east side, and then the low-income apartments on the west side. I don't think we need more apartments in the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in opposition to the project who would like to speak? Anyone who's neutral? Seeing none, the applicant does have five minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you, guys, for giving us an opportunity to have a rebuttal here. I guess a couple things that we did discuss at the neighborhood meeting with the folks that came today and that were at the coffee shop with us. There was one concern about kids in the elementary school. It being an elementary school, I have two young daughters that also went to elementary school, and I know that being a small community where I'm at, and they probably have 500 kids that go there, it's not normal for kids to walk around while school's going on. So don't really see that as being an issue. And in addition to that, the current condition of the lot, there's a lot of folks that are quote-unquote squatting in that property. There's alcohol bottles, drug paraphernalia, and stuff like that all over that lot right now. That's not good for the elementary school, nor is it good for the retirement community that's right adjacent to it as well. Secondly, the traffic issue, that's been brought up, and I do understand, I mean, if I was a resident across the street, I can see, you know, where they're coming from. I think on the other side of that, though, Richelli's was there and was a pretty well-known and very successful restaurant from everything that I've heard from folks in talking about the establishment and from conversations that I've had with Junior. That restaurant was operational for, I believe, 55 years, and it shut down four short years ago. My guess is the traffic flow when that restaurant was operational would not be very different from what we're proposing for the lot. So just, I guess, bringing that. And then for the letters, Manny helped us with the whole process, worked very closely with the city. He did send letters out to everyone, and if anyone didn't get a letter or didn't see it, maybe viewed it as spam mail or something like that, they would have had an opportunity to come here tonight as well. So that's all I got for the city.
Thank you. Any questions or questions for the applicant?
Thank you, guys.
Ma'am, you had your opportunity to speak tonight. Thank you. We will close the public hearing and let the commission deliberate.
Again, we're talking about only zonings. We're talking about mixed-use only zoning. There will be plenty of time to identify whether or not the traffic is right, the buildings are right, or those other things are right. But I do think here, I think what was argued by the public is that there aren't a lot of actual commercial operations like this, especially ones that are targeting small businesses. We're looking at small businesses and opportunities that grow strong neighborhoods with good mixed uses, which grow great communities. This, to me, seems like it's aligned with that objective, which is why I would support this rezoning. I guess we'll see from the plan whether or not this is thought through, but I mean, I would argue that probably we do have great opportunities in these types of neighborhoods to support these small businesses, but if they don't work, well, then that solves the traffic issue. But if they do work the way we think they should, I think it's going to be a great opportunity to have great entrepreneurial access in an area that should support it to make our communities better, which is why I would be supporting staff in this.
Is that a motion?
I was waiting for Francis to be mad at me, but I'll, all right, I'll move staff instead, yes.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to move staff unless there's additional discussion. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. That brings us to item number seven, which is a request from Iowa Motor Carriers Foundation for review and approval of a public hearing site plan Iowa Motor Truck Association for property located at 717 East Court Avenue, and for a Type II design alternative to wave undergrounding of overhead electrical lines where it is required in an underground district designated by resolution of the City Council, subject to City Code. Shawna will be presenting for us tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, Shawna Barron, Planning Staff. The item before you today is for a Type II design alternative to wave undergrounding within an underground district. The subject property here is the IMTA site. It is located on East Court Avenue, directly adjacent or in the close proximity of the courthouse building and, or the Capitol Building, I'm sorry. Couple of images looking into the subject property from East Court Avenue, one looking to the southwest, one looking to the southeast. And then additional photographs of the underground district along the East Court Avenue, the East Walnut Street, and the East Grand corridors. The site plan was approved last November. It encompasses an interior renovation project totaling approximately 1.3 million. This is equal to the property value currently on the assessor site. It did trigger full-site compliance, which in this case required a bike rack to be added, some perimeter landscaping, and then the undergrounding of the overhead lines. The project cost for the undergrounding is approximately 2.5% over our traditional threshold for waiver. However, staff feels that longevity of the undergrounding district, as well as the significance of the downtown area, contributes to the reason that staff wishes this to be upheld, to be undergrounded. The commitment by all the other properties within the eastern portion of the underground district leaves only two properties left to be undergrounded, this IMTA site and the neighboring site to the west. The underground district is not a Chapter 135 requirement, and so staff cannot really rule on that. However, we don't recommend that this site be allowed waiver and that IMTA be held to the same commitment as other properties within the underground district. This is the consent map. We did not receive any notices. Thank you much. Are there any questions?
Any questions for staff? Can you put your microphone on, please? I can't hear you.
Does the, do you know what the power lines serve?
I believe it serves the site.
Their site?
Uh huh. There are some other service lines that are attached to those poles, so there is some coordination efforts. In the packet, there were, there was work from Klein Electric. In the packet, there were, there was work from Klein Electric to do a new transformer pad. Verizon is an associated service on one of those poles, and then they had some restoration costs.
Could you go to slide 13? I think that shows what you're talking about.
Yep. Oops.
And again, I just want to reiterate that we're processing this through the site plan process. This is, so we're giving the applicant the opportunity to appeal this requirement through the site plan process, but the downtown underground district is not, as Shawna noted, is not a 135 requirement, and it's also very longstanding. It's, I've been here 25 years, and I can't think of a time when we didn't have it. So, anyway, just wanted to reiterate those facts.
The question, has this property owner made other improvements in the last 25 years that did not trigger the full site plan compliance?
Um, that's possible. I, I guess I don't have that information right now, I can get back to you on that. This project, because it exceeded the total value of the property and triggered the full site compliance, I'm not aware that there are any site plans that we've done, you know, in the past that, I think they've been under that 50% threshold.
I think it goes back to, I believe their site plan record goes back to their original construction.
I believe so.
Can you clarify the 10% number? Because I thought, because utility undergrounding was a major issue that I know I was a big pain in the ass on for a long time, and I think the issue is, I thought that reasonable was a 15% threshold, so we're saying this is under the 15%, therefore it's a reasonable cost, therefore there shouldn't be much argument against this at all. I guess the question is, what's that 10% number representing there?
That is the, when we created the opportunity for staff, see, originally, there was not a type-one available for any waiver of utilities, and everything had to come to the commission. And so, we paused and created a list of criteria of things, that created a path for staff to build, waive some of it through the type-one, and, but there's certain thresholds, and one of those threshold triggers is 10%, is it 10% or less of the total project cost? So, I'm not sure, maybe you're remembering discussion that you had as a group, that at some point 15 in that particular discussion seemed reasonable, but what actually is in 135? And again, that is a separator between what is a type-one versus a type-two that needs to come here.
Okay, so you're saying even within an undergrounding area, you're able to waive undergrounding requirements if the cost is less than 10%?
No, doesn't apply here. The underground, I mean, that's what's confusing. There is no really established appeal process for the underground district. So, it's part of, we're looking at it as part of a site plan, so we are giving them the site plan path, you're reviewing it. That is the best thing we can do from city code perspective, but it is a separate requirement from 135.
Any other questions for staff? If not, we can invite the applicant to the podium. Get up to 10 minutes, please state your name and address, and sign in afterwards.
Chairman, members of the commission, Eric Cannon, 2727 Southwest Snyder Boulevard. I'm here on behalf of Snyder and Associates as a consulting engineer, also representing the owner here as well. Before you tonight, and I think Shawna did a great job, I think the fundamental comment here is that the only reason we're even looking at the exterior of the site here is because of the threshold of the cost of the interior remodel. They are doing the bike rack requirement, which is required. We have looked at the dumpster enclosure. You know, they didn't plan on touching anything on the exterior at all, but that has been triggered because of that code requirement that you guys have. So, you know, again, you know, this was all new information to them, that they were going to have to do anything outside. They do have a site that's compliant from a parking standpoint, they are making the landscaping improvements, they understand that, but, you know, this is a huge cost. You know, you guys have that code section that has that 10% threshold for a reason. What's financially feasible? You set that 10% mark. We are exceeding that 10% mark. That is why we're here asking for that. You know, the 10% mark, we feel is that feasibility mark that the city established. You know, anything less than that, we understand that's part of the project cost, should be absorbed. When you exceed the 10% mark, you have the ability to come here and ask for that. We are on the edge of the district, and we understand that, you know, there should be some consideration for that. I personally was involved with the City View project that got this same exact waiver up along KEO, adjacent to 235, again, on the edge of the downtown district. And we have seen this waived other areas in town before on different projects. So, I don't want to give the impression that this is a unique request, that this is a one-off thing, this is a common request when you do have that extreme cost to a project. So I guess that's the ask that we're making. We understand that the goal of the city is to get everything underground, but I think there is feasibility that needs to be considered when it's looked at from an individual case standpoint, and again, that's why we're here making this request tonight. So, appreciate your guys' consideration on this and happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions?
Eric, I've got a couple of questions for you. Just looking at the site plan, can you kind of give us a quick review of where the overhead lines currently are, where the current transformer is, where it would be going? Some of the notes are missing on here, I'm getting a little older, I can't read that fine print.
Yeah, so it is just that little skinny bit of frontage there along Court Avenue. The site is very odd-shaped. You can see the area of those three poles right there that are along its frontage. You know, it doesn't have a lot of frontage on Court Avenue, it kind of goes back in this long skinny depth. So, again, yeah, it's not a ton of frontage, but it is obviously substantial cost when you have Mid-Americans, three-phase lines, you have Verizons also on these poles. So, yeah. And I know there's the Court Avenue reconstruction project that's just happening west of here. It does stop short of this. There could have been an opportunity as part of the city project to do that, but again, I understand that there's limited budgets from the city's perspective as well, right? You guys have to be fiscally responsible for the city. They stopped that project short of here for a reason. I'm not sure why the city didn't consider cleaning up this last little section as part of that project. I just, you know, we feel this is a big burden on an individual site. They're reinvesting in their building to be a good corporate citizen for the city of Des Moines, and they're just asking for your consideration on this. But to answer your question, it's those three poles there on the north side.
Todd?
Eric, is the general contractor coordinating Mid-Americans work?
Yes, he's the one who's had a lot of these conversations and has been talking to them, yes.
So his overhead and profit goes on their scope?
Similar to any project where you are responsible for that portion of the work and you have to manage all of that, that is part of it. But I would note, even with that out, they're still over the 10%.
Yeah, I was going to say, typically, that's paid for directly by the owner, not through the general contractor. And I looked at the numbers on there, and they don't look too far out of line, so, just so there's some vetting there.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this request? Anyone in opposition? Neutral? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and let the commission deliberate.
I would want to move staff, because we have deliberated this plenty, and at the time, the threshold that we had was 15%, still seemed reasonable. This is an area that's high visibility. We argue that, yes, it's only a few poles on an oddly-looking thing, but it's also the majority of the frontage of it. It is unfortunate that the roll of the dice here meant that this cost is on this building versus the city's, but I think we gave up a lot in our objective towards undergrounding before, and this seems the least we can do to actually be consistent with the undergrounding strategy now.
Chris, I appreciate the work that you've done on this earlier, too, and I support what you're saying. I'm just struggling right now because I look at what we're doing on Second Avenue, and we have an opportunity in doing the sewer project to bury all the Mid-American lines, and we're not. So, it's tough.
I'm not saying that us doing it wrong somewhere should allow us to do it wrong elsewhere. Doing it right here means we're staff.
Is that a motion? Sorry, go ahead.
Could I ask a question?
Additional discussion, yes.
Could I ask, is there any precedent for the city subsidizing when there's a small gap over the 10% threshold?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, I have a motion on, yeah, which is to move staff.
All right, we have a motion on table to move staff. Unless there's additional discussion, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Any abstentions, same sign. Motion passes. Are there any committee or director reports?
Well, I do want to, just want to note staffing update. We, and of course, the person I'm going to talk about is trying to look away. Jillian Summer has been a senior planner with us for a good time. Those of you that work on the private side, probably have worked with her over the years, and we've, she's recently received a promotion to deputy planning administrator. She's, we're dividing up management responsibilities a little bit differently within our division. Bert is still a deputy planning administrator as well, and we're hoping that this helps us function better. You know, our division, or actually, our department went through, you know, a major reorganization, or was created just a few years ago. Same thing with our division, you know, we were, pieces were taken from three different divisions of the former department and put together, and so it's been a learning experience for all of us to figure out as we go how to do this, bring on a lot of staff, and make adjustments as we go, and this has been something where we've really looked at that past experience and gone, you know what, this is something that needs to be done. So, I'm excited to share that with you all, so.
It's very exciting. Congrats, Jillian. We'll still see you around here, right?
Actually, you'll probably see her more.
Good. All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you.